Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of Lakeport City Council for Tuesday, November 7th. We are just returning from closed session with no reportable action. Roll call?
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Councilmember Spur?
Present.
Councilmember Farman?
Here.
And Mayor Bettina?
Here. Pledge of Allegiance. Doug, where are you going?
Okay. Let me make sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for joining us, everyone. If you're here to speak on an item on the agenda, please wait for that item. If you'd like to talk to us about something else, there's some citizen input forms at the back to fill out. Go ahead and do that if you have it. Acceptance of the agenda. Do we have anything to move or change?
If there's nothing further, Madam Mayor, we move for acceptance of the agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda. Tonight, we have waived the reading except by title of any ordinance under consideration, approve the minutes of the City Council regular meeting of October 17th, 2017, approve the warrant registers of October 13th, 2017, and October 31st, 2017, and adopt resolutions designating the City of Lakeport's agents for California Disaster Assistance Act funding. Would anyone like to pull any of these to discuss? Anyone from the public? No? We'll take a motion.
Madam Mayor, we move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are on to citizen input. We have some tonight. Nicole Wagner?
I guess I'll go first. Nicole Wagner, I live at 2023 Lakeport Boulevard, and I'm concerned about what's going on in front of my house. It's created a really dangerous situation during the day. You've got flag people there at night, and there's one-way traffic at night. You've got two-way traffic with only one car able to go by. Somebody's gonna cause an accident there almost immediately, I guarantee. Second of all, we weren't notified about what was going on there, except from the county. Some people on the, in the Beach Association got notified about this construction, others were not notified. We're a little concerned about what, what the scope of work is, how long it's going to take, what it's gonna cause the traffic. What are the plans that are in use for this particular project? And general information that we don't have. So, thank you.
Suzanne Lyons?
I live at 2035 Lakeport Boulevard. And we were out of town. When we came back, we had a letter from the county saying that this work was going to be going on on the beach. And we aren't really against the work. I know that the, the project has been, the project was being considered before I was even on the City Council, so I know it's an old project. But we didn't know anything about what was actually planned, and we still don't know what's actually planned there. I guess Kevin's gonna give us some more information tomorrow. But I think that it would've been a whole lot better thing emotionally if somebody had contacted us. That is private property. It does belong to the Beach Association. And to just see all these big earth movers out there and people going, well, you know, we're gonna dig up your beach. And it's why we moved there is because we own that beach. So, it would've felt better to be able to talk to people ahead of time and know what the plans were and what was gonna happen. The other thing is, I know that quite a while ago, it was before Tim, I think, and George were even on the council, we talked about how fast the traffic goes there. The people that are working on the road right now, they have big cement barriers up, they have signs that start all the way over on High Street, huge big signs saying, "Slow down." And people are still going like that side of the hill there. It's really fast. Those people don't wanna stand there and work on that road, even though they've got somebody with a sign slowing the traffic down. It's going so fast. I measured the lane from the end of my driveway to where the traffic's supposed to be. It's 28 inches. I'm trying to back out, and I've got, I don't even know how I'm supposed to do it, because there's a guy stopping traffic here, but then the traffic's coming here and it's only one lane. So, it's really scary. And then at night and on the weekends, there's not gonna be anybody directing traffic at all, and it's two-way traffic in one lane. So, I think there's some issues there that maybe if people walked out and looked at what was going on, you might say, something needs to be done. But it just would've been better if people had talked to us and said, "This is what we're planning to do," because I think there's some issues. One of the things we saw as we heard they were gonna plant willows, we're going, please don't plant willows. It's the only place where you can see the beach, you know, on the whole stretch of Lakeport Boulevard. So, it just, it would've been nice to have a conversation.
Thanks again. Phil Graham?
My name's Phil Graham. I live at 2035 Lakeport Boulevard. Along with the comments that have already been made last Friday, I, about 11 o'clock, walked my dog across the street. I'm looking at the lake, and here behind me, four feet away, a car spins, spins out. It was going northbound on Lake Shore, ended up facing southbound in the northbound lane, four feet behind me. The, you know, it first rains, the road was slick. They spun out. You know, this has been a problem with speed here on this. This accident wasn't reported because no one was hurt, the lady drove off. But these things do happen quite a bit. Since I've lived here, I've seen four accidents, rollovers, people going off into the curbs. So, it's one of the more dangerous roads. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Kevin, you're going to speak to residents tomorrow regarding the project?
I'm gonna be talking with Suzanne Lyons. We're trying to come up with a meeting date or time to kind of go over the project. They came in today and looked at the documents and just gonna try and help take a look and show them. We have some concerns in regards to where the project and its interaction with the Green Peter out there and just with Suzanne at this point.
Are these city workers or county workers?
It's actually granite construction is our, is our contract, contracted for this project.
And was there notification done properly?
Not, well, in regards to this one, Doug, I don't know what kind of notification requirements they had, but I mean, all the work is being done within the existing road right-of-way. So, in the, these past two days, what they've been doing is putting all their traffic control pieces in place, and they'll begin some of the removal of the beginning tomorrow, maybe not tomorrow. I think the weather's probably not gonna be very helpful to them tomorrow, but we'll see. Doug knows a little bit more on the project scheduling of it, but at this point, it's all being done within the existing road right-of-way. And if, if your council recalls, it's an emergency repair project. The main issue is the existing bank stabilization out there. Combination of asphalt and, and concrete is, is failing. The water gets in under there and it's undermining the roadway. This, this project is intended to rearmour that stabilization with a better improved version of what's existing there. And then one of the other benefits that I'm excited about with this project is it also includes a walking path on the other side of the curb, which is my hope will kind of hopefully alleviate some of those issues that Mr. Ramper.
Yeah, it'll make a huge improvement.
As far as safety goes out there. But all the work is being done within the existing road right-of-way and prescribed easement there. And the project is timed specifically to take advantage of when the lake is at its lowest. It's a very short work window that we have available to us. And we were set to get moving on this project last year, but we ran into some timing issues with environmental permits from state agencies and weren't able to accomplish it. And as a result of that, we ended up seeing the damage worsen, you know, another 120 feet or so where we saw some additional road undermining. So, I, I understand, you know, the, the issues of, you know, we had to do it again. I think we'd go out there and talk to them closer, but we're trying to get this done before the next storms go, so we don't continue to lose Lakeport.
Lose that board. Okay. Because this is damage not just from this last year flooding, but.
It originally goes back to 2005.
10 years ago, right?
Correct.
Okay. Madam Mayor, do you have to add something to this? Come up. Yeah.
I think one of the things that's problematical for us is we got a notice from the county saying that the county was talking about whether they were gonna issue the permit for, I guess, the repairing vegetation. And so, we didn't know what to do. We don't wanna go and complain about something if it's gonna be okay, but we don't know what it's gonna be. So, their meeting is on Monday.
Okay.
That's kind of makes it something that we kind of need to have answers in a hurry in order to know how to proceed.
And you have an appointment set up?
Yeah, we do now.
Okay.
We just got that tonight. But, but it is the Beach Association.
Yeah.
I'm the secretary and, and Bill is the vice president.
Okay.
So, we are here as representatives for the Beach Association as well.
Good. Thanks, Suzanne.
It's online. Oh. Disagreed, because it's been quite a while since we have the council meeting that approved our project and the details of the project. So, it's good that we're meeting with the.
The association.
Unfortunately, it should've been sooner, but we're meeting with them and talking to them.
Yeah, and I, I can talk to Suzanne tomorrow. If it feel necessary, we can set up a quick meeting to discuss with other residents. I'm happy to do that as well.
Yeah. Okay, good. Do we have any other citizen input tonight? Okay, and next, we have a presentation of the Taste of Lake County People's Choice Award by Panette Talia of the Lakeport Main Street Association.
Good evening, everybody. Hello, listening. We're very happy that you have allowed us to come before you to present these awards to our People's Choice Awards from the Taste of Lake County, which we think is a big deal. And I'm very happy that we have representatives from both our restaurants and our wineries here. So, let's see if it's the first one. So, 2017 winner of the Taste of Lake County People's Choice Award for the best winery goes to Cash Creek Vineyards.
We thank you for doing this and so that we can showcase our, yeah, Bill. Thank you very much.
Keep it safe till you get it home.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, well, I guess there's not much of a surprise. Who's getting the next word here? And the 2017 winner of the Taste of Lake County People's Choice Award for Best Restaurant, Lake Boathouse Bar and.
All right.
Thank you so much for participating. We really appreciate it.
What did you guys serve?
I can't remember.
Uh, we did the Cheddar, Tomahawk, Tignanese.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Congratulations so much.
Thank you for allowing us this time.
Thanks, Panette. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll see you guys next year.
Next year.
All right, next, we have a public hearing to adopt the proposed resolution approving the City of Lakeport's 2017 CDBG application. Kevin?
Good evening, councilmembers. This item is a public hearing for the City of Lakeport's 2017 Community Development Block Grant Application. It consists of a couple of different projects. The first is a public infrastructure project to support the Martin Street Apartments Housing Project there for multifamily housing at 1255 Martin Street. If you recall, that, that project got a $4.5 million home grant a couple of years back for the purpose of constructing the multifamily housing complex. The CDBG aspect is a, we're seeking $2.5 million primarily for the construction of off-site improvements, street sidewalk being big pieces, but also some sewer projects there being that's on the other side of the hill, there are some significant improvements that are necessary to bring sewer out to that site. Second piece is a $500,000 funding to continue our business assistance program, which, as you know, a few years back, we were begging to give away, but now we're now seeing a turn in, in the economic circumstance in the area, we've had a lot of success. I think we were able to do over $600,000 in our last, in almost the last 18 months or so in business loans to local businesses. So, we're looking to seek additional funding to continue that program. The third piece is a planning and technical assistance grant for Forbes Creek Neighborhood Improvements. These are primarily drainage and access improvements such as sidewalk that go to support a previous study that the city did for that Forbes Creek Neighborhood there, kind of between, between Martin and Second Streets from Forbes going all the way back to the highway. And then the last piece is we're now required the last couple of cycles to state where our supplemental program income money goes from previously issued loans, and we're looking to continue to apply those to the ongoing Carnegie improvements. It should say Carnegie Library and not Carnegie Hall there in Stafford's Park. We'll fix that in the rest of the.
And I think it needs to be fixed. It's supposed to be for any of our public building ADA, because if there is any leftover, we're gonna use it for City Hall for our new window.
Yeah, so it's supposed to be City ADA improvements.
Yeah, City Build.
Which includes Carnegie and then.
Yeah. We'll make that correction up.
Specifically this room as well.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, depending what program income is back. Yeah. We'll make those corrections as well.
So, following your public hearing, we hope that you maintain a motion to approve the resolution, and we'll move forward with submitting the 2017 CDBG application.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Any questions before we open the public hearing? No? Okay, go ahead. Open the public hearing. Would anyone from the public like to speak? Okay. Oh.
Well, the shot. Just again, reiterating support and the importance of projects that have been outlined for the funding as well as for the program income. Both very important. And again, to remind you that we are working on an application to the Economic Development Administration for $200,000 over two years to be administered by the Lake County Chamber of Commerce for technical assistance and business loans as well. So, that would complement what the city is looking to receive as well.
Thank you. Great. Thanks, Weldon. Anyone else from the public? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Any final comments or questions?
It looks like we'll need to amend that resolution too, because it does say Carnegie Hall in the resolution. So, when we adopt it, we'll adopt it as a.
You're specifically referring to section four of the proposal resolution, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes, correct. Section four on the back of page two there, we're amending Carnegie Hall to read Carnegie Library and then also city buildings.
Yeah. Carnegie Library and city buildings.
Other public, own buildings.
I think Weldon wants you to say Carnady.
Yes.
So, stop it.
Already.
Is that really how you say it? Carnady?
Yes.
Thank you for that, sir.
No, thank Weldon.
Mayor, if there's nothing further, move to adopt the proposed resolution approving the City of Lakeport's 2017 CDBG application with the changes in item four for the supplemental support for the Carnegie Library and City Hall improvements.
Publics.
City buildings.
Yes.
I second that.
You did?
Yep.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next, we have Lakeport Disposal Franchise Agreement Addendum Amendment. Nick?
Good evening, councilwoman, mayor. What staff is asking city council is to approve and to authorize the city manager to sign an amendment to the franchise agreement with Lakeport Disposal. Back in May of 2015, the city entered into a franchise agreement with Lakeport Disposal for mandatory solid waste collection services within the city. And in that franchise agreement, there were allowable adjustments to the rate schedule that was adopted beginning July 1st, 2017, and each July 1st for the subsequent five years. Also in the contract, it stated that the contractor, Lakeport Disposal, needed to notify the city in writing by March 31st in order to get their rate increased as of the following July 1st. They, for whatever reason, we did not receive notification in writing and did not calculate any increases for July 1st. Due to increases at the transfer station and, and increases in the Consumer Price Index, the Lakeport Disposal asked us if they could somehow retroactively increase the rates. So, what Proposition 215 allowed was not a retroactive increase to the rate, but what we're asking is for a rate increase to occur on July, on January 1st. And that, those rates are included in this staff report along with the amount of increase. The franchise agreement allows for a half a percent increase for any increase in third-party costs being the transfer station increases and also in the increase in Consumer Price Index ended up being 3.79% for a total of 4.29% increase to the rate schedule. Lakeport Disposal understands the deadlines in the agreement, and going forward, they will notify us in writing of any increases they're requesting by March 31st, and it would simply be an annual increase if it's, if it's, if it's relevant on each July 1st going forward.
Nick, will you review again? What, what are the allowable increases? The maximums each time?
They are allowed a half a percent increase for basically justifiable, justifiable increased third-party costs, tipping fees at the transfer station in this case. And I was provided rate schedules from the transfer station, from the prior year and the current year, and the, the rates did increase. So, they're allowed a half percent for any third-party increases and any adjustments in the Consumer Price Index.
Okay. Got it.
So, in that fee schedule, what you received from the transfer station, did it, were those dated at all? When did, when did that higher fee come into effect?
July 1st of each year, of 16 and then of 17.
So, they, they were aware of the rate increase and just missed the deadline, the March 31st deadline? They had already been paying the increased rate. It's not like something happened after that date?
Um, that's my understanding correct.
Craig, you wanna come up?
Yeah. So, Craig, what's your Lakeport Disposal? So, what happened is, we were doing meetings with the Solid Waste Task Force with the county, and they, you know, are gonna expand the landfill entirely. And they were not, they said they were not doing a rate increase July 1st, but Waste Solutions did a weight rate increase on the, at the transfer station, and we were not aware of this. And we didn't pick up on this till September, because it doesn't say the pricing on our, on our sheets, so.
Any questions for Craig while he's up here?
Well, so, you're only allowed a 0.5% increase. Was the increase on or around that much, or was it more, or, or was it less? But you can take a 0.5 increase. I mean, what, what was it, just for curiosity?
The tipping fees, what did they go up?
I didn't, I didn't personally calculate a percentage on their increases. I have the documents. I could, I can run those numbers. It was, it was a couple bucks. Yeah, it was like from 42 to 40. I, yeah, I don't have my, those papers with me right now, but.
A half a percent is not a big deal. I was just curious if you were getting the fair increase, or if you were actually gonna have to come back next year, because you couldn't get enough this year in other words. But say it went up 4%, you're only allowed 0.5%.
Oh, yeah.
Then we would see you again next year when you filed the paperwork. That's, that's kinda what I was getting.
It's going to go up with the meetings with the county, with, with Laura's doing and stuff. It could possibly go up January 1st again at the, at the landfill, and that would reflect on the price of the transfer station. They haven't done their first reading on their motion to increase their prices January 1st, and this is, they're, they're, they're starting to collect their money now. They're not gonna start increasing the landfill for another four or five years, so, so that's what I, and, and in our meetings with, with the task force, I, it didn't, in September, it didn't sound like they were gonna do this until.
It was too late to get the paperwork.
Yeah, and, but in our meetings in the springtime, we, we did not know the transfer station prices were gonna go up, because we kept, I kept asking the, the Solid Waste Task Force, you know, and they said they, they, they weren't going to, but the, the county does not control the transfer station's price.
But do you know the rate increase at the transfer station?
Do I know the rate increase? I got it over here. It's, it was 60, oh, again, a second.
Okay.
Okay, so, July 1st, it was 61.95 a ton. Now it's 63.40 a ton at the transfer station. And then the rate at the landfill could go up from 42.83 currently to $47 a ton January 1st, and then that would reflect, reflect on the prices at the transfer station, because they would go up too.
That's pretty significant there compared to the other one.
Yeah.
They're both far exceeding the 0.5% that you get, though.
Yeah.
And so then that $47 increase, is that covered in what we're doing today, or is that something that you would then notify us?
Actually, we, we, because under, what I understand, we have to do a Prop 218 to do another rate increase.
Right, so, right now, based on the Prop 218 proceeding that we did in 2015 and the franchise agreement, if there's another increase in the tipping fees, then you can request that 0.5% again to be adjusted to the bill starting July 1 of next year.
Yeah.
And every year after for the, for the five, for the first five years of the agreement. So, what, what the proposal here today, the amendment, does is just says, okay, this one time, we didn't get notification in March, so we'll, 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 we'll adjust the rates the same amount that we could've done in July, and we got the notice, but we're not gonna do it till January. So, ratepayers are essentially gonna get.
Six months.
Six months without getting. So ratepayers are essentially going to get six months without getting the adjustment that Lakeport Disposal is entitled to under the Prop 218 proceeding and the franchise agreement, steps.
Yeah.
So it's a date change? So every January instead of every...
No, after this, it will still be, everything else remains the same. So if the, if there are increases in tipping fees, which is something that's going to be, then Lakeport Disposal will notify the city in March that it would like the increase.
So they'll go to July as well?
So that we can put out the notice that's required under Prop 218 in the mailers to the ratepayers, and then July 1st, it will be adjusted again by .5% to compensate for the tipping fee adjustment and CPI.
Okay. Is any, is retroactive collection of those fees at all part of this?
No, retroactive, we're not doing anything retroactive here. That would be a problem.
Okay, so then if the second fee goes up in January, then we have no way of capturing that until July, so January, July is just kind of a wash.
With respect to Lakeport Disposal.
Right.
That's correct. That's the bargain that the parties struck.
So the timeline is if they do it in January, he can do the paperwork in March to get his increase in July.
Correct.
But the problem was, is he wasn't notified of the increase, so therefore, that's why he's asking.
Right, so if there, if we wanted to change rates completely, then we'd have to go through an entirely new Proposition 218 protest here. But if we don't, and we want to stick with what we have, this is how we do it. With these incremental adjustments for five years based on CPI and .5% for the tipping fees.
Question?
So just the reason why we're here, just to make it clear, so there's two things that the city needs to comply with. One is Prop 218, and we've done that. And the reason why this is compliant with 218 is because essentially, ratepayers are getting six months off the adjustment that they otherwise would have had, and the rates on January 1 aren't going to be any higher than they would have been on July 1. But there's also a contract, the franchise agreement, and so in order to adjust the notice provisions related to the annual adjustment, we would need this amendment, and that's why we brought this to the Council of the City.
Thanks, Craig. Did you see something else?
Also, I was talking to Lars, and he said they're going to do, want to increase every January 1st, and all the garbage companies are on the fiscal year July 1st. So he was going to mold us this around, and I told him, I go, so I would need to know in early spring what, so we could do our changes July 1st for January 1st.
Right, right. Because it seems like six months of landtime without being able to capture that, that loss revenue. That seems significant.
But, so David, let's just say that 61.95 up to 63.40 is, you know, like 2%. Let's just say roughly. And they only get a .5. So if it did go up anymore, but he's still not recovering his costs because it only went up .5, so theoretically, in other words, if the tipping fees went up more than the .5, which they have, and it looks like it's going to be a 10% increase at the landfill in Clearlake eventually, almost 10%, so if they didn't go up anymore, but they didn't get what they needed, they're still within their rights to come back and say, hey, we didn't get it all at the last increase, so we can reply in March for July to get another half a percent to catch up.
No, I think, so what you're asking is, say they raise the tipping fees 20% on January 1st.
I'm saying they just raise it to...
And they don't raise them, and they don't raise them the next four years, can Lakeport Disposal still get their 5% each year?
25.
25%. That's a good question. I have to double-check the franchise agreement about that.
Because it's only fair, instead of getting a big hit, it's kind of like the old adjustable rate mortgages that can only go up a quarter percent, and then the interest rates were going crazy back in the, you know, whatever it was, the '70s. And it would go up every year to keep catching up, and if they're way behind, and something goes crazy with the landfill and 10%, I mean, my God, that's 20 years of .5% just to get caught up. So that's what I was asking.
I don't have the franchise agreement in front of me, so I can't give you definitive answer. If the rates were not adequate to cover the cost of service, then probably the best thing to do would be to do another 218 proceeding, because that's the point of those proceedings.
Especially if there's a significant increase, because they would never catch up.
That was unforeseen, right? And I do believe that the .5% was determined based on looking at historical adjustments, and if there's an adjustment that's, A, historical, then obviously something's...
So nevertheless, I think the best thing is always to go up incrementally, instead of hitting people with a hammer with a big one, you know, like with the water price increases and stuff like that. So these small modest increases are small, and I don't think it's a big deal, and we need to keep you solvent when you're doing a great job, you're doing that over and over. It's not a big deal. Or if something catastrophic comes along, then we just go back to... But as it looks now, sorry about the bad intel that you got, but I think moving forward...
Always apply. Always apply. Any other questions? Thanks, Craig.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone from the public?
Suzanne Lyons. Yeah, people were really upset when their water rates went up. But at least they got something for the service. But when the garbage rates, there are houses here, we have one, where we don't have any garbage, but we have to pay for garbage because if we don't have garbage, then we don't get water. So I think that's a problem. I don't mind paying for a service that I get, but I really don't like paying for a service that I don't get. There were five weeks this last winter when we had to pay our garbage bill, even though nobody picked up our garbage. That annoys me. It really does. I mean, we talk about somebody giving you a service. If you're going to get paid, then you need to give me the service. So I don't know what the answer is for the houses that people have where nobody's living in them, where they come up seasonally, and they're here for two months or three months, and they're paying a bill all year long for a service that they don't get. So I think that's something that maybe the council needs to be looking at, is why are we paying for something that we don't get? And we certainly can't turn off the water at some place that needs to have its garden watered or just to keep the service going and have to pay for garbage that does not get picked up.
Thanks, Suzanne. Anyone else? Can I bring it back to council? Any final comments? Any motion?
I move to approve and authorize the city manager to execute amendment number one to the franchise agreement between the City of Lakeport and Lakeport Disposal, Inc., for solid waste, recyclable material, and yard waste collection, processing, and disposal services, and authorize the city manager to execute.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, next we have 20th Street Traffic Mitigation Striping Project Accepted. Doug?
Madam Mayor, honorable council members, this is just a routine, standard practice that we have here at the City of Lakeport that when a project is completed, and we're asking for completion acceptance, we bring that to the council. The striping on 20th Street was completed in August. We've gone through all the proper paperwork and procedures, and now we would like to close that project out, and so we brought it to council, asking for the resolution for the notice of completion and the final payment to the contractor.
Project looks amazing.
Is it working?
That's amazing, yes. Well, I'd like to comment on that here.
Yes.
So I personally believe that it was a good add to that area. I've driven it myself, I've looked at it, and I think it has created, at least in my view, the effect that we wanted. However, we're still actively working that area, and unfortunately, we're seeing vehicles upwards of 44 miles an hour since it's been striped in the area between Hartley and Miller. That's the more populated residential area. So we need to do, and the reason I'm mentioning this is, I've had discussions with traffic engineer, and it's my recommendation that we don't rush to do another speed survey until we've had sufficient time to do more enforcement in the area, because at this point, if we were to do a speed survey tomorrow, we wouldn't change anything, based on what I'm seeing. So unfortunately, we need to get more education out to the public in that area. We have done some social media postings and on our aggressive enforcement in the area, we are writing tickets, and we're just hoping that the public will work with us and help educate others, because I don't believe that writing tickets alone is going to change the speed limit. That's what we're seeing. We've got to, we've got to keep getting the word out to get people to be more cognizant of their speeds, and not only that area, but others, but in particular, this is an area we're still working on, and we intend to continue working on it, and we'll provide more feedback as soon as I believe we have sufficient information. So I just kind of wanted to mention that.
That's too bad, they're not looking at it.
You know, in conversations with Phil Dow, he would say that you need to put the street on the guy, you need to make it narrower. I think the fact is, is that, and I almost hesitate to bring it up, but it's not my style, but a lot of the people that are going over the speed limit are the people that live there, and they are not going to be fooled by the fact that you've made traffic calming, narrowing illusions when they already know that the street is wide. They've been driving, and it's wide, it's just as wide as it ever was. There's not like K rails or something to narrow it. So I think the chief's idea of doing the enforcement for the locals that know that the road is still wide, it just makes it look narrower, so there's still plenty of room to speed through there. I think that that's the prudent thing to do, because, you know, honestly, it hasn't changed the width or anything, it's just trying to make it look as if it's narrower. And the people that live there, they know how wide it is, they've been driving it for, you know, 10, 15, 20 years, and they're the ones that were probably doing some of the speeding, let's just say that. So I think waiting is a good idea before we start posting new signs.
And that's accurate. I mean, one of the tickets that we wrote at 44 miles an hour in that area was a resident of the area. So additionally, I've reached out to at least, so far at least, one resident who last year was assisting me with handing out letters to all the neighbors, so I've reached out to that citizen again, resent her another fresh release, and I'm going to continue to do that to try to get the word out as much as I can. So I just kind of wanted to mention that. We know people are frustrated, we're trying to make it as much of a priority as we can, but I just wanted that to be known.
Yeah, thanks to you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Any comments or questions from the public? Okay, bring it back for motion.
Is the motion accurate? I mean, it says move to adopt the proposed resolution accepting construction of it, but it's already constructed. Is that what we wanted it to say, or the completion, or... Any comments? Is it fine?
Doug's looking at it. Is that how you want it, Doug?
I guess what I'm looking at, where it says what's being asked, the council's adopt resolution accepting 20th Street Traffic Mitigation Striping Project is complete and authorizing payment for the final invoice from Striping Graphics. Can I not stand...
So we're accepting the actual construction, not like a bid for the construction?
I know, but I'm not seeing that motion.
There's no notice of completion, if that's what you're...
Yeah, there's no notice of completion, because that's what you were asking for, and I didn't see that in the motion. That's, because it just looks like we're moved to accept the construction of the project.
Yeah, it didn't say that.
And that...
Yeah, that's correct.
And that's okay, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so...
Can you read it one more time, what you're going to...
Well, I was just pointing out that it wasn't, as Doug had said, that it was the completion of the construction, so...
But you're looking at the staff report, right?
Right. He's reading from... The suggested motion.
In the staff report.
Are we using the suggested motion then?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'll make the suggested motion. Move to adopt the proposed resolution accepting construction, completion of 20th Street Traffic Mitigation Striping Project by Striping Graphics Incorporated and authorize the payment of the final invoice in the amount of $17,502.50.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Doug.
You're welcome.
Next, we have the 2017 Flood Damage Repair Projects Update.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, as you're aware of, our major floods we had last January, February year that affected the community, and of course, mostly affected the library park and lots of damages, and the Willow Point Mobile Home Park. There's still, the fencing is still up, so we get a lot of questions as to why and when it's going to happen. So we did include a segment, much like what you have in your staff report and our newsletters, so the whole community could receive what's going on, because it has been a while, and Doug will talk a little bit more about the projects, because he's the one that's been spending countless hours working with FEMA and our insurance company and working on getting the approvals for the, to correct all the issues and rehab our library park. As far as the Willow Point, what I've been told by the owner is that, well, and I know that the portion of Willow Point on the north side of the creek, the Community Development, HCD, the Housing and Community, State Housing and Community Development Department, has given them the authority to move back in the mobile home units in that section, because all the, they did all the repair sewer system on that side of the creek. I believe it's about 10 units that are back in there, and they intend to, they've done a lot of work, and they want to get the campground ready for next summer and do some improvements to the office and the campground area. At this time, they have not done the improvements to the south side of the creek, and so that is still closed, and everything's capped off this year. Our sewer system's capped off from being used until those improvements are done. So if there was a storm here and it happened, and shortly, we would be in good position with our sewer system at Willow Point. As far as library park and some other major damages that happened to the city, I'll let Doug give you an update on those areas. Ready, Doug?
Yes. Madam Mayor, council, I had given a handout to you, and we put some in the back. As, I got thinking, it might be helpful for you when you could ask questions, if you kind of have an idea of what the process is, and why in the world does it take this long to get anything done? And so what I provided with you is a very condensed, I mean, there's all kinds of things that go in between those bullet points, but I didn't want to take up two hours and bore everybody to death. So we really condensed it down to what are really the milestones in, as you march through this progress. And it all starts out by filling and submitting an application to FEMA after your disaster, after you sustain the damage. Then we have to submit a preliminary damage assessment, and that's done by city staff, and we have to go around and inspect the entire city and list all of the areas where we find damage. And so we list it out, spell out what it is, and we submit that to FEMA. And the main thing that they use that for is to determine whether or not we reach the threshold for a disaster, for a declaration of a disaster. And so we met that declaration level, so when the governor and then the president declared us a disaster area, that's when we begin the process. And it begins with what they call CAT A and CAT B, which CAT A is debris removal and CAT B is emergency protective measures. And so when we start the cleanup process, we have to document all of our hours and our equipment, everything that's involved, where all of the debris is going, we have all this documentation, we have... We have all this documentation we fill out. The same way with emergency protective measures. That would be the orange water wall that we had purchased. We're hoping to get reimbursed for our destroyed aqua dam through the major CAT Bs. So we have to track every dime we spend on sandbags, grains of sand, every single thing. We have to track all that. And then we have forms and documentation that we have to put together and then submit to FEMA for requesting reimbursement. Basically, we had two declarations. We had what we're calling 4301, which was the first storm. Then we have 4308, which was the second storm. We have CAT As and Bs and all these documentations has to be done for each one of those events. So basically, we've had to been doing duplicates of every single thing we've done by the timeframe that they were done. So which equals out to which disaster they were in. So we have to track all of that and keep all of those records. So I gave you just a quick rundown of what the different categories are. You might see these somewhere along the line. A CAT A, like I said, is debris removal. A CAT B is emergency protective measures. A CAT C is roads and bridge damage. A CAT D would be what they call water control or your utility systems. CAT E is buildings and equipment. And the water and utilities kind of go together. CAT F is strictly utilities. And then a CAT G is park and recreation. So all of the projects and all the work that we do has to be broken down and it fits in one of those categories. And so in what category it fits in, then it's given a project number, which fits with that category. So once we get all the categories figured out and what we're going to do, we have to submit preliminary damage estimates again. Then FEMA comes out in OES and we do a site inspection and coordination of all the locations. So we go through our entire list with them. We actually did that three times, going to each location and measuring and reviewing. And so then now we start to develop a scope of work. So we know what we want to do there, so we have to write up a scope of work. We have to submit that to FEMA, which then they look at their list of the locations they went and the project number that it's under. And we have to agree on what the scope of work, what the damage was and what we're going to do to fix it. So that's when we start getting what they call DDDs, which is damage description and dimensions. So after all of these meetings, we get a form back from FEMA that lists the project and where it was. And it actually lists all the dimensions that were measured out for everything. So an example would be the seawall. It would show that it's 550 feet long. Its average height is five feet. And all of the dimensional type of things are on that form. That form has to be reviewed very carefully because when we sign that form and send it back, that's saying that we're agreeing to that description. And to go back and get that changed, probably ain't going to happen. So we get our DDDs all done. We've got most of them done. I think FEMA just is so far behind, they're not even going to do some of them. So what they've done is they've moved on into what we call the PW phase, which is a project worksheet. Now, a project worksheet is similar to the DDD except that it is more entailed. And now there are dollar amounts that are attached to those descriptions. In the DDDs, there's no dollar amounts. It's just what is, what are we agreeing the damage was? The PW, now we're starting to get into dollar amounts. The PW phase is where we are right now in the process. And so we spent all of these months getting to this process. And we are actually starting to receive some, which is a very joyous day of public works. And so as the PWs come in, we're going to be reviewing those. We're already making comments back because there are some errors on those, the ones that we received. So we comment, send it back. Hopefully, we can come to an agreement. They'll make the correction and it comes back. Margaret will sign those because that's pretty much what we're saying. Okay, we're accepting this. This is what we're going to get. And to go back and change that, it's not going to happen either. So it's a very meticulous process as we start reviewing these. And that's where we're going right now. So after we get all of those signed, CalOES, which isn't dealing with them, is not on this sheet, but those go to CalOES. CalOES is actually the one that gets all the money. And so we have to get a letter from CalOES saying that they have received the PW. They aren't in agreement with the PW. And now they are going to give us the funding or tell us that that money is in the bank to go ahead and begin the projects. And so we haven't got to that point yet.
And they don't allow you to do the environmental until all that's done?
You can't do anything until we get that letter from OES saying that we are funded.
But we can't do the environmental until that? Will that change the scope of the project possibly?
I mean, we could do it, but we may not get reimbursed.
Yeah. Yeah, they told us that don't do any environmental. They tell us everything's approved because you may not get approved for that. So.
Yeah, right. I feel pretty confident that for us and what we have, environmental's not going to change. What we're really going after and we've been working very, very diligently on is getting what they call a mitigation measure for the wall. In other words, we don't want to put back another cinder block wall, which is going to have the same issues as time goes along that this one's had. And due to the changes in the laws where we can't put the sand, you know, over and create the beaches like we did in years past, now what we're having is just a continual erosion. As the water hits the face of the wall, it goes down and it just keeps taking material out. So we have no way of putting that material back in there. So that was part of our discussion with FEMA on the mitigation measure of putting a sheet pile wall in there where we will never have to come back and address a wall failure at Library Park if we can go with a sheet pile. And so we are in that process. It's called a mitigation measure. We've set rough engineering designs. And so I don't see, things we're just putting sheet pile in. I don't see any real environmental flags being raised. We're not digging up and, you know, disturbing soil or doing anything like that. So there will still have to be an environmental done, but I'm not seeing it being controversial. That's just my personal professional opinion.
So the walls are going to have to stay up because the sidewalks are compromised by the wall because it's kind of a one, sole one kind of unit. So, and the water was getting underneath the sidewalk during storms. So unfortunately, that means the fence will have to be up until we can repair the wall. And the wall has to repair when the lake is low.
Well, with a sheet pile, that gives us a little more flexibility. With a CMU wall, yeah, you have to be at low lake or you're going to have to put up, you know, like the water wall we put up to do the boat ramp.
So we're going to have to look at it for another summer?
I would say that's a high possibility.
Very disappointing. The ramp should be done, the dock that's up.
The crankup will be done.
Should be done by summer. But the wall, yeah, just want to heads up, it could possibly be up there next summer.
So tell us more about the ramp. What has to happen there?
On the First Street Boat Ramp?
Yeah.
The First Street Boat Ramp is in the process. We have not got a PW back on that. We have submitted a DDD. And as far as I know, we are on track for FEMA funding to replace that ramp. And I'm not going to go into all of, you know, just because we have, we're doing, basically this is a ballet between FEMA and insurance.
Yeah.
And so it kind of goes from a waltz to a tango, back to a rumba. And so, you know, there's a lot of things at work here. And so if you really want to know all that, just come talk to me. And I can explain all of that business.
Well, most importantly, it was to let the community know. And that's why we have in the newsletter that why the fences are still up there. And we're hoping, you know, we're moving as quickly as we can, but we're working at the pace of state and federal government. And so people think city government's slow. The bigger the organization, the longer it takes. Give me credit, FEMA, I mean, they're all over the United States with huge, huge projects. So they have been good at working with us. But they also commented that we were the very first entity to get all of our work in after the floods. And we were ahead of everybody else. And so I think that's really helping us get in this process done. Even though it seems slow, we're ahead of the curve and other entities in getting that funding.
So when you say funding, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that we've already done. And with the debris removal, and I imagine that maybe even the police protection down in the vacated areas was charged up. So that is stuff that we already did and we're getting reimbursed. Now, at the same time, the FEMA situation is such that you don't get, you know, them to give you $800,000 to do the sheet pile thing. That needs to be reimbursed after it's done. Or because they're not going to fund that upfront.
What we will get is a letter of funding, the way that I understand.
Which you could borrow against or something like that.
Yeah, and like Doug was saying, we also have the insurance in there that might be funding us some more of this upfront. So we're about, you know, it's kind of figuring out who's going to pay what between insurance and FEMA on this. So they're working on it.
And I thought long ago, and Doug and I had this conversation, that we need to make sure that the public knew that this was out of our hands and that we, unless we had some kind of a huge benefactor that would come in and throw a million dollars at us and say, "Go ahead and fix that wall and do it with a sheet pile, that would be great." And then when FEMA gives you the money back in 18 months or two years, then, you know, I'll get my money back. But we knew this was coming and we knew it was going to be a serious problem. And even Stacy's wondering what the heck is going on, Doug. We should have this done by now, but it's a real problem. But I think it's important to keep the information. Just like with the deal down on Lakeshore, you know, when people know what's going on and they can fully understand it, then they're a lot more agreeable and amenable to the inconveniences that it brings.
Exactly, yeah. Because it's not the most attractive thing to have that fence up there. I mean, I hate seeing it, but you know, it's a safety issue. And so we have to have it up until that's completed. And like Doug said, there's so many bullet points in between those points that are on there. He spent many late nights working with, you know, on this project. It's been a, it's been a huge, for the first time he's ever done it too. I mean, he's put a lot of time into this. So we're trying our best to get it done as soon as possible, but it's too much money for the city to put out of their own pocket. And so we have to go through all the guidelines and all the rules to make it happen.
Well, my concern would be coming up on the season for rains and stuff. And we've already got damage there. And FEMA, he puts out the thing saying, "This is our damage." And then all of a sudden, we get another big storm that comes in there and washes out another four feet of sidewalk. Then what do we do? I mean, do we have to redefine it and start over? Or do we have to say this is a supplemental because we didn't get the time to get this done? Or?
That'd be an interesting question because we wouldn't be able to claim anything unless the storm was declared a disaster. So that's a good question. I don't know if they would prepare to help us with anything that wasn't caused by a storm that's declared. So that's a question I hope we don't have to.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, let's say they give us 1.5 million to fix everything. But during the time they give us the money, we get another storm that's not declared a disaster and washes out more. And now it's going to cost us 2.5 to fix it.
That's a good question. I don't know yet.
I think what the answer to that is, George, and we looked at that and we talked about that, is we're going to have to take some, you know, watch what's going on and if necessary, take some protective measures on our own. Because we went back to FEMA and talked about, okay, look, you guys have dragged us along so long now that our construction window is past. We're going into winter. And what are we going to do now for our projects? And we could go back and petition FEMA for protective measures money. But if we do that, now all those steps that brought us up to the PW go away and we go all the way back to step one to start the whole process all over again. And in staff talking amongst ourselves, we think that that would be so counterproductive that I'm willing to stick my neck out there and say, "I think I can protect what we have now." I do not want to go back and start all over again. Because like Margaret said, we got in early, so we're ahead of the curve. And right now, we're some of the first ones that are in line to start getting money. I don't want to put us at the back of the pack. And then by the time we get up there to where it's supposed to be our payday, FEMA's going, "Oh gee, I'm sorry, we ran out of money for your disaster." Which, believe it or not, that does happen. And usually, a couple of years down the road, they'll come back and go, "Oh, we got some more money now, so let's look at maybe what we can do." I want to keep this in the front of the pack. And I think with my staff, I think that we can protect what we have as long as we don't get another flood like we had last year.
That's a wise choice. But what I was just saying is because if you go, what we're doing now, you have to go back, you're going to be in a never ending circle.
Exactly.
They're not going to get it to us in time and just keep going on and on. So I'm just hoping that we don't get too much more damage.
Yeah, we just hope we don't have to get it, yeah, into that conversation with FEMA. But, you know, we've been doing, staff has been doing a lot of preventive, waiting, you know, getting ready for storms this winter. The wall's a little bit trickier, but as far as all the flooding, they've been working hard. And we were able to get some assistance from a program for the flood disaster to help us with the flood prevention. So luckily, we've got, what, four or five?
Yeah, we've got five people.
Five people working for us that paid through a grant to help us with all the prevention. So it's been really good.
And they've been cleaning our, all of our stream systems pretty much all summer. So in that aspect, we're looking really good. I think I just have one more quick comment that I'd like to make. There's a little bit of misconception of who and what FEMA is and what they do. And I'm going to be quite frank and quite to the point, Margaret's cringing. I believe that FEMA, in a lot of ways, for a lot of agencies, count on you finally giving up and throwing in the towel and they end up not having to pay. And so I think we need to keep that in mind as we go along this process is that it is very arduous. But if we stick to the course and we keep pushing the rock up the hill, then I think at the end, we're going to come out in the daylight and we're going to have hopefully a new seawall. And our DG is going to be replaced. And Lakeport is going to be put back and made whole. And I just hope everyone will be understanding and support, and continue to support us even though this seems like a very long and arduous process. Because if you don't stick to the course, you're going to end up with nothing. And I think we just need to stick to the course. So thank you very much.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public? Thanks, Doug.
You're welcome.
And Margaret. All right, Council Communications. Margaret, anything else?
No. How are those Dodgers doing? Yeah?
That was an heart, Nick.
They lost the goose.
Sorry, we have to hear about the Dodgers all the time.
Yeah, really. David? Anything else, Doug?
Oh, no, you've heard enough from me for tonight. Thank you.
Nick?
Yeah, real quick, I just wanted to keep you guys updated on the wastewater bond refinance. We received bids back from bidding banks. We received bids back from bidding banks on the first and we selected the winning bid, which was BBT Bank, the same bank that refinanced the Assessment District bonds. The rate was 2.52%, which calculated to net present value savings of $346,000 plus and cash flow savings of $770,000. With the $50,000 increased annual debt service, we'll be able to redeem, the bonds will be fully redeemed in 2031, cutting eight years off of the original bond.
Good.
Yeah.
It was good, too.
And a lot of the bids that came in included adjustable interest rates, which is something new that we're seeing. And it has to do with some uncertainty in the market surrounding the tax reform proposition in Washington DC. The BBT bid had a fixed interest rate, so we feel like that was definitely, it was the lowest, but it was fixed and it was definitely the best deal.
I like it.
So we're pleased with that coming out.
Yeah.
That's all. Thank you.
Good. Cheek?
Yeah, I just want to take the opportunity to mention our Maxwell Emergency Phone Notice System again. You probably saw some of the communications, but we're trying to get the word out in numerous different formats over the next few weeks to try to get additional residents to register their cell phone numbers with that system. We sent out a release on it, I think it was Saturday. It's in the newsletter again, so that'll be, I think that's getting mailed out every day now. It hasn't already, but that'll go to every house and business in the city, so it'll be listed in there again. And hopefully, by the time we do our test call, we'll have significantly increased the amount of cell phone numbers in there. And also, we did just receive the newest AT&amp;T data that's being uploaded now to replace the previous data that was in there because the landline numbers change. And if I recall right, I think since the last time we did it, I think there's 500 less landline numbers in our jurisdiction, so.
Oh, wow.
So that's significant, so that'll be new data that's uploaded. So hopefully, people will be paying attention to this information we've been putting out and taking the effort to go in and make sure that their cell phone is set up to receive the voice message also.
Did you mention the date of the test?
It's going to be December 4th between 10:00 AM and 11:00 AM. So we did put that out in a release this weekend, so. And I know that people aren't paying attention because I've gotten numerous calls from citizens requesting assistance on getting their phone numbers set up in there, so. Thank you.
Great. Helen?
Yes, I attended the warming shelter meeting yesterday on behalf of the city. Looks like they're planning to open again on December 4th, doing the same thing, doing their pickup here at the Natural High Site as well, which worked out really good, I thought, last year. We're going to continue to work with Lake ABC on getting a bus shelter at that location because it's quite dark, so we'd like to get a light out there and then a shelter for all the fun moisture that falls from the sky during the winter as well, so that'll be helpful. We'll hopefully have that all in place prior to December 4th. I also wanted to do a quick plug. One of our high school students, as part of their community service project, was there as well. An advocate in the looking as part of their project to donate 100 pillows and sleeping bags to homeless of Lake County as well. So I'll get that up on our website, Hot Topic, and probably try and get it out on our website as well. His name was Quentin, so I had to help out there. Spelled wrong, but it still works for me. We'll get that information up on the website, so if you've, it says new and gently used, so if you've got one that's been sitting around there that's in still good shape, it sounds like a really good program that would help promote as well.
Kelly? Councilmember Spur?
Nothing to report except for Veterans Day is coming up this weekend, so honor your veterans.
Councilmember Parlet?
Well, the much anticipated abandoned vehicle abatement day went over and it went really, really well. And it was great to see the cooperation of the CHP, code enforcement, county cities, everybody working together and we got tons of vehicles. I mean, I think the actual number of cars total was 40, but there's all kinds of other strenuous, horrifying things that could have ended up on the roadside that were all taken care of. And thanks to Kelsey Ball Auto Salvage and Jones Towing for, and we already got a letter from the CHP thanking for the great cooperation. But it's one of those great things that it just saves everybody, especially the county and the city of Clearlake, a lot of money throughout the year of getting these people to bring these in responsibly and in a timely manner instead of creating a nuisance factor, which is so much more expensive. So kudos to everybody involved with that program, so. And then tomorrow, I think you and I have APC and LTA and stuff like that.
Tomorrow?
Isn't it tomorrow?
It is? I'm glad you mentioned that.
Madam Mayor, if I could just expand a little bit on Councilman Parlet's comments as well. We've got a number of citizen complaints regarding the accumulation of some of those abandoned vehicles at Jones Towing. We ran into a problem with, and the landfill is only accepting two of those vehicles at a time, so unfortunately, it's taking us a little time to kind of get the rat through the snake, as you would say. But they are slowly disappearing, but we know that it did look quite ugly out there for some time. We're getting it cleaned up. Jones Towing has been very forthright with us about what's going on there and we're cooperating. We're seeing it slowly clean up, so just to kind of get that out there on the public record as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Barnes?
No report.
Protown?
No report, thank you.
I just wanted to mention that Halloween was really busy downtown. Councilmember Spur and I judged the costume contest and we had more people than we could manage practically. The whole museum park was full and it was just really cute. To me, it's like one of the best things in small town, having a parade with a band and the kids all dressed up, walk through Main Street. It was really fun, so. Onto Thanksgiving, right? Okay, meeting adjourned.